All right, thank you for joining us for tonight's meeting, August sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, from the West Carroll Board of Education. Mr. Sloan, call the roll, please.
Mr. Cox is absent. Ms. Harvey?
Here.
Mr. Llewellyn?
Here.
Mrs. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Mundy?
Here.
All right, if everyone will please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will start with introductions and get the meeting started. To my far right, our Treasurer, Ryan Sloan, sitting at the end of our table. We have our Student Rep with us. Send me a link to his left, that would be Maddie McKeon. Directly next to her is Autumn Harden. Directly next to me is Leslie Miller, our Vice President. My name is John Laval, I'm Acting President for the twenty twenty-three calendar year. To my left is our Superintendent, Dr. Townman. He's based there from Joey's in Indiana with his mom, so he won't be with us tonight. Further down the table is Nate Mundy, our Board Member, finishing up his second year. And then as we go around the room to our side table, we have three of our four administrators that'll join us on a regular basis for our meeting. We have Devon Berry, our Human Resources Director, Julie Jones, Curriculum, and Jack Hayne, our Business Manager. So introductions out of the way, we'll go ahead and move to our agenda. Do we have an addendum for it?
No.
We do not. So we'll go ahead and look for a recommendation to accept the agenda or motion in a second and then, I don't know, a woman adjusting.
Oh, I had to put it in there, so we have them.
Oh, cool. Okay, we'll just move on to that next. So we'll look for a motion in a second to accept our agenda for the night.
Salute.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Sloan, call the roll, please.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Llewellyn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mundy?
Yes.
All right, so Item Six, looking for a motion in a second for us to go into Executive Session for the purposes of discussing compensation of a public employee or official.
I motion.
Second.
All right, Mr. Sloan, call the roll, please.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Llewellyn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mundy?
Yes.
All right, that passes, so we are going to go into Executive Session, we'll be back shortly to our Public Session.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Llewellyn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mundy?
Yes.
All right, and with that, we'll move on to Item Seven, which is comments from the public. No papers sent in for that. See anything there? So Communication Update, Miss Corbett is out of May. Miss Corbett? Back with us after Philadello last time? Glad to see you back.
Thank you. I'm still not quite over it. It's kind of crazy how long this has lasted.
Is it on?
I think so, is it on?
Is it green?
No, it is not green. It is green now. Everyone can hear me. Okay, I just wanted to remind everyone the ways you can find out what's happening in your school district, westcarrolltonschools.com is our website. You can access Facebook at West Carrollton City Schools, Twitter at WC City Schools, and you can also connect to our social media at our website. I wanted to thank Moraine, the Fire Department, West Carrollton, the Fire Department, and Police Department. They all came out this morning to support our kids, remind drivers to drive slow. We want to remind everybody to do that all year round, but especially right now because traffic does get congested at this time of year. The littles are just learning new routines and getting in and out of cars, so please use caution when driving through school property and in your neighborhoods. Kid earn screening happened this morning and will be continuing tomorrow, so we're already creating some memories, but I wanted to share with you a few memories from last year. Uh-oh, I did want to show you this picture first. Four generations of Pirates. Dr. Townsend is laughing because she got to talk to this child today. He is just awesome. And his mom, grandmom, great grandma, they all wanted me to know they all graduated from West Carrollton. So here's some memories. So excited.
Happy New Year!
And so our little boy that was so excited, Brian, I saw him this morning, he's at Russell, and Mr. Toby was telling me that last year, the bus would drop him off from Schnell and he'd go home, and then he'd walk over to Russell just to say hi because he had been there in second grade. So, Brian, I saw him this morning, he had a big bag, lugging into school with his supplies, so we're all excited to see him again. He is just, he's a good. Our school calendars are here, they are in the buildings, and you can get a copy in any school office. Just wanted to remind everyone, though, that sometimes things do change, and that's why you should always watch for your text, email, phone communication from your child's school, so you'll get up-to-date information. Also, Dr. Townsend will be restarting her weekly communication, and just be safe, be respectful, be responsible, be patient, especially at this time of year. Everyone here at West Carrollton Schools wants to help you, and we appreciate you being kind and patient with us because it is a hectic time of year, but we will take care of you. Thank you.
All right, and we move on to Item Nine. Mr. Sloan?
Thank you. I ask that the Board approve Items Nine A and Nine B as presented.
All right, just a motion in a second, please.
Salute.
Second.
Any comments, sir?
These are the reports for July, the first month of fiscal year twenty-four, and our tax revenues are starting to resume because tax bills were due in July, so we definitely appreciate our taxpayers paying their bills and otherwise starting another new fiscal year.
All right, fair enough. Any questions anybody has? Just need a vote call, please.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Llewellyn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mundy?
Yes.
All right, Item Ten, Devon?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Superintendent recommends that the Board approve the listed personnel items Ten A through Ten J.
Looking for a motion in a second, please.
I motion.
Second.
Five names on here. Any comments, Mr. Berry?
As I've said to Dr. Townsend, I think this is mentioning my ninth year in this position, and this has to be the most challenging year yet. I think it's reflective of what we've all read and seen in the newspaper, as well as on various news channels about the declining enrollment and interest in becoming a teacher. I think that's reflective in our staff, which gives many of our staff members that haven't had many options in the past now have options. So we lost one of our really good teachers to a local university, I don't know, to do the exact same job. Just challenges that, you know, I think is a little delayed for us, but I think we finally found it this year.
Fair enough. Mr. Sloan, call the roll, please.
Mr. Llewellyn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mundy?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
All right, Item Eleven, and Mr. Berry again.
Superintendent recommends that the Board approve the listed personnel items Eleven A through Eleven B.
Motion in a second, please.
I motion.
Second.
It's pretty straightforward, but any comments?
No.
Mr. Sloan?
Mrs. Miller?
Upstate.
Mr. Mundy?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Llewellyn?
Yes.
All right, and we move on to Item Twelve, and Mr. Hayne.
Yes, the Superintendent recommends approval of the following transportation contracts with senior assistants for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Transport one student to and from the Wellness Center in Mason, Ohio. Transport one student to and from St. Rita School for the Deaf in Cincinnati, Ohio. Transport two students to and from West Carrollton, or I'm sorry, the Warren County ESC on Western Road Facility in Mason, Ohio. Transport one student to and from the Project Life Program, part of the Greene County ESC located on the Wright State University Campus. And transport one student to and from the Governor County ESC Learning Center West on Kettering Boulevard in Dayton, Ohio.
Looking for a motion in a second, please.
Salute.
Second.
The question never ends, this is pretty basic, again, the stuff we deal with at the beginning of school year. Well, throughout school year sometimes, but certainly at the beginning. Mr. Sloan, call the roll, please.
Mr. Mundy?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Llewellyn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
All right, and then Item Thirteen, our Superintendent.
So I'd like to recommend that the Board enter into an agreement between the West Carrollton School District and the University of Dayton School of Education and Health Science for an individual graduate assistantship agreement with an external agency as presented.
Okay, looking for a motion in a second, please.
Salute.
Second.
Comment?
Just a quick comment, we did this last year with UD, this gave us the opportunity to have a student pursuing their degree at work in the school, and it's very beneficial for both of us.
I'm covering one student, right?
Mm-hmm.
All right, and go ahead, Mr. Sloan, call the roll, please.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Llewellyn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mundy?
Yes.
All right, Item Fourteen, back to Mr. Hayne.
Okay, the Superintendent recommends that the Board approve the location of school bus stops for the Early Childhood Center, Perry Russell Elementary, Schnell Elementary, West Carrollton Elementary School, West Carrollton Middle School, and West Carrollton High School for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year as presented in the Pedicure for thirty-three, twenty-seven point oh-one, the Ohio Advice Code. Superintendent or designated as delegated by the Board of Education to designate and relocate subsequent bus stops as necessary.
All right, motion and a second, please.
Salute.
Second.
Any comments?
It's something we have to do every year within the first ten days of school.
Mr. Sloan, call the roll, please.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Llewellyn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mundy?
Yes.
All right, moving on to Item Fifteen, Mr. Hayne, you can.
Yes, the Superintendent recommends that the Board approve the release of transportation liability for Centerville City Schools to transport a West Carrollton student to and from St. Albert the Great School in Kettering, Ohio for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Motion and a second, please.
I motion.
Second.
Comment?
It's either a shared parenting thing or a daycare, and what happens when we do this, this allows Centerville to claim this student for transportation reimbursement, and we give up that right too by transferring that liability, so they can put them on their T-one and claim expenses on their T-two report for that one.
All right, Mr. Sloan?
Mr. Llewellyn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mundy?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
All right, Item Sixteen, back to Jack, this is his show tonight.
Okay, the Superintendent recommends that the Board approve the acceptance of transportation liability from Miami'sburg Schools to transport a student to and from Dayton Christian Schools in Miami'sburg for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Motion and a second, please.
Salute.
Second.
We'll just go ahead and vote. Mr. Sloan? Oh, go ahead, you have a comment?
There's a mistake on the wording on this. It shouldn't be to transport a West Carrollton student, it's to transport a Miami'sburg student.
It's Miami'sburg Schools.
It says West Carrollton student.
Hey, West Carrollton student to?
From, to transport a Miami'sburg student. Yeah, Miami'sburg's releasing their student to us so we can transport him, that's for a daycare situation.
So it's to say Miami'sburg student?
Should be a Miami'sburg student, not a West Carrollton student.
Or transporting a Viking instead of a pirate. What about for this anyway? Just saying. Eleven, and then this room here, so, all right, so we'll adjust that. Mr. Sloan, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mundy?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Llewellyn?
Yes.
All right, Item Seventeen is Dr. Townsend.
I'd like to recommend that the Board approve the proposed Harold Schnell Elementary School third grade trip to Camp Curran in Lebanon, Ohio on October twenty-third and twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three for their outdoor education program as presented. This trip will provide students an opportunity to participate in the Living History Program.
This is so cool.
It is.
Done this twice, I'm gonna go again. The thing's even pretty good. All right, motion and a second, please.
I motion.
Second.
All right, Mr. Sloan, call the roll, please.
Mr. Mundy?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Llewellyn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
All right, Item Eighteen, Dr. Townman again.
I'd like to recommend that the Board approve the proposed West Carrollton High School Band Student Trip to the Bands of America Grand Nationals Competition on November eighth and ninth, twenty twenty-three in Indianapolis, Indiana, as presented. Students will be able to showcase their hard work and skills on a national stage. They will receive ratings and feedback from some of the top-tier adjudicators in the industry.
This is either the first time ever, or the first time in a long time they went to Indianapolis.
In a long time. My first year is last when they went.
All right, motion and a second, please.
Salute.
Second.
All right, Mr. Sloan, call the roll.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Llewellyn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mundy?
Yes.
All right, Item Nineteen, Mr. Sloan.
The Superintendent recommends that the Board approve the agreements with the three individuals as presented effective August sixteen, twenty twenty-three.
All right, motion and a second, please.
Salute.
Second.
All right, Mr. Sloan, call the roll, please.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Llewellyn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mundy?
Yes.
All right, Item Twenty, I get to say something. I'm looking for a motion in a second, that the West Carroll Board of Education approved the following items effective August first, twenty twenty-three, and those two items would be the Fifth Amendment to our Superintendent's contract and the First Amendment to a more recent contract that we approved for our Treasurer, Mr. Sloan. So looking at, these are basically just cost of living increases, these aren't big huge raises or anything we'd all love to have, but still sufficient, so we are going to be voting to at least amend their contracts so that they can get paid a little bit more like they should be for doing the good job they do for us. So motion and a second.
Salute.
Second.
All right, Mr. Sloan, call the roll.
Mr. Llewellyn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mundy?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
All right, we'll move on to, that's it, right? All our items?
That's it.
And we'll move on to comments from Maddie, if you had anything to share? I'm sure you didn't stay this long, so.
Well, I'm just excited for the new school year and just happy to be back for the new school year, I guess, yeah, that's it.
All right, good to have you. I guess the next meeting or two will kind of maybe something get an update from you about the closet thing you're working on?
Oh.
I can, I was gonna talk a little bit about it.
I don't wanna step on anybody's toes.
I see how it is.
I brought it up. Okay, we'll just move along, anything else?
Yep.
All right, so I will share for just a second, the roundtable that we typically participate in that the four districts work on, and Maddie's part of. I did hear from the Student Rep at Valview, his name is Carson Kinder, and he emailed me to say that Valview has added a second Student Rep, so we will have a female joining up in the group, at least one, that I know of from Valview, so they've expanded to two kids as well, so just cool. Every time I hear something new, it's exciting, and so we'll have another newbie joining our little subgroup, our roundtable group here in September, and we'll share more about that in future. Committee reports?
Do you know what day that is?
We will have it scheduled, yes, so that's another email I'll be sending out soon. I just said, well, it'll be September, that's safe, that's thirty days, I can make that. Committee reports? All right, so we'll move on to comments from our Superintendent.
So this one's really not related to the school, but I wanted to make this public. The exit for West Carrollton going I seventy-five north is closing eight twenty-nine for forty days, so it might affect parent pickup. So the date's finally on the sign.
Did they, okay.
Yeah. It was on there yesterday, I'm like, now I know. So if you're headed to Moraine, the Moraine exit, I think, is still closed as well, so traffic might be a little tricky for the next few weeks.
I think the plan was they weren't gonna close it till Moraine opened that exit there, so.
It's in print, eight twenty-nine, it wasn't there until yesterday. I looked every day, so keep an eye out for that. There is a phone number for the city if you wanna call and get more information. It was a great first day back, thank you to the staff and students, it was a lot of fun, welcome back to everybody, and just to remind everybody, we have a non-conference game Friday, the Pirates will be playing those Vikings again at Miami'sburg, so if you get a chance, come out and see the kids, thank you.
All right, good. Mr. Sloan, anything you know?
Kind of, I was gonna say this, even if Devon hadn't brought it up, but just kind of wanted to follow up on his comments. Just wanted to commend Dr. Townsend, Devon, Julie, Jack, and Melissa regarding what they do to properly staff our district, I mean, what they've been experiencing in HR in terms of just the turnover and resignations, I mean, teachers, administrative, and support staff, I mean, it's a, it's a job market unlike, I don't know if it's safe to say, any that we've ever seen, but it's just a lot of turnover, and I mean, it's not just here, I'm sure it's statewide and nationwide and nationally, and plus, I mean, just a lot of it has just been within the last week or two, and so I know it's put a lot of pressure on them to get staff in place for the start of school today, so just wanted to commend all of them, and just glad I'm not in HR.
Yeah, but that's certainly triplest the paperwork you have to deal with too, right? I can speak to that, 'cause I signed about fifty thousand sheets of paper before this meeting started. All right, well, thank you so much, appreciate the comments. We'll move on to the table to my left, and Mr. Berry, any comments tonight?
Very useful, just wanted to welcome everyone back, our students, our teachers, our entire staff. I was able to visit three schools today, I'll be in the others tomorrow. Yeah, it was really good to see the kids back.
All right, Ms. Jones?
Well, I'm also glad I'm not in HR. But we had a great communication on that day with the teachers, that was a very nice meeting, well put together, and then I helped out with receiving some of the ECC students today, so we enjoyed the paved, the new paved driveway and the new traffic pattern, that was, that was very good, very, it was very nice, it went well. Tomorrow we'll have more, more parents picking up and dropping off, but yeah, overall it was a great, it was a great day, good weather, so it was, it was nice, so that's it.
Jack?
Yeah, the HR thing's kind of funny, it's four weeks ago, I thought, well, I had twenty positions to fill. As of this morning, I filled twenty-four positions, and I have thirteen-foot positions still to be filled. So it's just one of those, you know, you feel like, what's that, a Paul O'Doul song? You take one step forward, you take two steps back. Yeah, that sort of thing, it felt like it's been going off for the past four weeks right now, but we'll get there, we have enough, our drivers are fully staffed, we've got enough staff to pick up where we're short, so they're doing some extra jobs for us, and we'll get through it, and it was great to see all the students back, the buses back on the road, see all the staff members walking back into the buildings again, it was always a good time, and people are starting to count down.
I bet they are.
Did, did you hear something say that?
Looked good in the books. All right, so we are near the end here, we'll have the Board comments at this point, we'll start with you.
All right, all right, I noticed that the meeting's going a little short, so I need to lengthen it up a little bit.
Okay, we'll move on to West.
I definitely want to start off by, you know, talking about our closet space, or the giving closet. Now, just to give a little bit of a rundown, the giving closet, for those who don't know, it's a real, it's kind of a simple concept, but it's really helpful. It's almost like Pyrepacks in a way, where, I mean, we're giving opportunities for kids that might not have it, you know? So the giving closet will have things like clothes, you know, deodorant, toothpaste, toothbrushes, all sorts of different items, we have a pull list, don't we? But, you know, it's gonna be incredible for kids that, you know, is not fortunate enough to have those things, or, you know, Lord knows what goes on in some of these kids' lives outside of school, you know, this will be another opportunity for them to, you know, I don't want to say be regular, but that's not the right word, but, you know, just to be like everybody else, you know, or be a part of it and things like that, so I'm very excited for it, we finally got the closet, so it's gonna be split, too, it's a whole thing, me and Dave White did a little bit of a walkthrough, and it's gonna work out, I promise, I know, well, we have to move some things around, it'll be fine, but we got two closets, so one's gonna be for clothes, the other one's gonna be for all the other items like deodorant and all that, so next is to get an advisor for your P four K, right? So, and then after that, well, right now I'm gathering items, and then, you know, once we launch some big event to gather more or whatever, then it can be some big grand opening, I guess would be the best way of setting that for a closet of items, so.
Will this be just for high school related, or?
So, we're gonna start with high school, except if some kid in middle school wants to come over, and, I mean, not my business, but, you know, I mean, see how the high school goes, if it becomes really big, I mean, I'd love to move through all the schools, maybe not just the high school, but every single one of them, but I guess it will have to see how it grows, for sure. I think the high school, in my opinion, is probably where kids are really gonna need it, either high school or middle school, but I'm like, I know the layout of the high school, so that's why I chose high school first, 'cause I know where all the closets are, so I can at least, like, tell them, like, how about that one, I want that one, right? But, so, you know, we got closet space, we're really getting close to launching this thing, and it's gonna be so exciting when we do, 'cause I know for kids that are not fortunate enough, this will be a really good opportunity for them to have something that they deserve, you know, so, not just need, but deserve. Also, for those who are watching, I know, I know we got at least a few thousand watching right now, for all those, all those people who are watching us and that's interested, don't forget that, you know, if you wanna sign up to be on the ballot, now, the regular petitions are over with, but you can still sign in to be a write-in seventy-five days before the election, so I think, and I might be wrong, so if you're watching this one of the few thousand, do your research, but I think it's gonna be the twenty-eighth of August is the day, the last day to. But I think it's gonna be the twenty-eighth of August is the day, the, the last day to file as a write-in. And just so you know, filing as a write-in is the easiest thing. You just sign some paperwork. It's like, it's so easy. So, you mean, if you are passionate and about serving and, you know, this is kind of like a now or never, this is it. Please sign in as a write-in, or we're gonna have to go through a lot more effort to, uh, try to have people serve this community, so. Um, other than that, you know, it's sad to see some of these people leave, like Mr. McNeil. He, uh, man, he was my teacher, an incredible teacher, credible for robotics, just an incredible guy. So seeing him go is really tough to see. But I am happy to see Riley and Josh, um, I won't say their last names, but they're good friends of mine, especially Josh, Justin, they're really good friends. So it's kind of funny to see him. Uh, I didn't even know he applied, so it's funny, at the convocation, he was in there, and I'm like, what are you doing? You're not gonna do that anymore, for sure. I mean, he got hired, so I'm excited for him. I'm excited to see the amazing things that he's gonna do. You know, on top of that, uh, I know it's been in the talks, Pirate Island is coming back up this year. Um, September twenty-third from two to eleven, so, you know, one of the many thousands here, definitely be out there and, you know, support not only athletic boosters, but support your community as well. Be out there, you know, write that in your calendar, so we got that. And then, um, you know, I, I want to sincerely thank all the teachers and the staff for everything that they do. You know, for those who have come, come and went, for those who are, thank you, staying. You know, really, you guys have done an amazing, amazing work here and continue to do that, especially during this school year. And I want to echo what Ryan said as well, you know, I know you guys are struggling, yeah, man, and I just appreciate all your hard work for getting everything set up and ready, and I'm just so excited to see what these kids are gonna do. I know they're gonna do amazing things for us and, you know, especially the staff and the teachers. I, I've always had full faith in their ability to, uh, teach our students and to do their part, so. And also, I know some of the staff is wondering, read my lips, I will be at the schools this year. They want me to walk around, I will be walking around this year. That's a promise, so. That, uh, that's a big thing I really wanna do this year. I know they've been asking for it, so I definitely wanna go and walk around and see how things are. And I'm excited to see that. So that's gonna be a really big deal. Uh, other than that, I always have a quote, and this is good for the students especially, but it's by Jim Roan. And it says, "Don't join an easy crowd. You won't grow. Go where the expectations and the demands to perform are high." And high school is a fantastic way to, uh, be a part of that, so, other than that, have a great school year.
And nature won't be old enough to know this probably, but the last person who said, "Read my lips," didn't have a very good track record after he said.
That's the reason why I said that. I wanted to throw something to the board.
I know you know that, so I, I know.
It was pretty funny, just, thank you.
That's, wow, okay.
Little throwback.
All right, well, a few things. Uh, first of all, I'm gonna welcome everybody back to school. Um, I know the high schoolers and, uh, every, all of them except for the freshmen did not start today, so they will all start tomorrow. And, uh, so they were all on service, um, and it, it should be a good start. We've got a brand-new principal over there. Wish him well as, as well. I know he's been sending out one calls like all the time. My phone is just, yeah. He's wearing it out, but that's okay. I wish I had a report for tennis. We have had to postpone matches this week because of weather. Mother Nature and I are going to sit down, um, because we have a match tomorrow with Fairborn, and right now they're calling for eighty percent chance of rain tomorrow afternoon. So, yeah, we'll, uh, we'll move on. I'm sure we'll start getting them in, but we're going to be all bunched up and going every night, so. And I'm happy to report we have a full team. Fourteen girls are on the team this year. And, uh, very active and going, and we had them all on the bus yesterday as we drove to Butler and then turned around and came home. So, um, but we'll get there. We, um, Sarah did great with our uniforms. I had to order extra 'cause I didn't have enough. And she was able to get the emblem sewed on in record time. Next week's our, our pictures, and the girls are all excited about that, so. They'll all be in their uniforms tomorrow. A while back, I was notified that I was on a committee. And I didn't really realize what this committee was. I don't think I put in for this committee. I might have, I, I don't know. Uh, but I was able to make a meeting. Uh, they've had three and I'm, or two, and I've missed both of them because of other obligations. But I did manage to make it to the August, and lo and behold, they had made a complete name tag for me. I am on the Region Executive Committee of the Southwest Region of Ohio OSBA. Yeah, we're, so, um, they are from all over the southwest area quadrant, so Cincinnati all the way up to Greenville. Um, we, we cover a lot of landscape, um, but it was a, a really good meeting. I, I met lots of people. Uh, and they're going to, they are, uh, pretty much responsible when it comes to the legislative platforms. So we heard about what's on the legislative platforms. They're not so great, so, uh, we're hopeful, um, that we can move on. They, they do have the, the fall banquet. They also have a spring banquet. They have a present at OSBA, and then they have dinner in December, so. And apparently this is a two-year commitment. I don't know how, but no one has put me on any of the committees. Yay! But I doubt my luck will run for much longer. I'm sure I'm gonna be put on a committee of some sort. So, yes, I am on, I'm on yet another one. I don't know how this happened, but, um, I'm on there and a nice group of people, and I enjoy meeting them all. Other than that, I wish everybody a, a very safe and happy first day of school, and that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Autumn?
And I also wanna wish everyone a successful twenty-three, twenty-four school year as well. That's all I've got.
All right, um, we had executive session tonight, and we are not even gonna be close to an hour, so hey, kudos to all of us.
It's Joe. It's my Joe.
Pretty much I go away with anything everybody else has said. Certainly, the school year started, and, um, just glad to have everybody back. I know all the teachers glad to have kids in their classrooms and, uh, looking forward to this school year. Uh, Monday, we did have convocation, and one of the roles the board president has to play is have to say something in front of four or five hundred people. That's a little nerve-wracking, but, uh, went all right, I think. But, uh, it's just good to see that everybody in one place, even if it is for just a short period of time. Uh, it's, it's a little good indicator that, hey, we're back to, we're back to school again, so. Again, uh, just mindful of traffic, mindful of kids. It starts getting dark here in a couple months, and then you gotta really be paying attention, so. Uh, we will meet again in the first Wednesday in September, and I will ask for a motion and a second to adjourn.
So move. Second.
All right, Mr. Sloan Caldwell?
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Wellen?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mundy?
Yes.
All right, meeting adjourned.